All right. Well, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Placerville City Council. Will everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? It was a hidden flag.
I know.
I saw it.
I had a little bit of a glimpse of it, so. All right. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Clarici.
Aye.
Councilmember Gottberg.
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Aye.
Vice Mayor No.
Here.
Mayor Saragosa.
Here. All right. I think we're all here. All right. There are no ceremony. Thank you, Regina. There are no ceremonial items this evening, and we do not have a closed session report either. So we will move to item five, which is the adoption of the agenda.
I'll move to adopt.
All right. First and a second here. Roll call, please.
Sorry, can I get a repeat of who in the motion?
No is the first and I'm the second.
There you go.
Councilmember Clarici.
Aye.
Councilmember Gottberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Aye.
Vice Mayor No.
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. So moving right along to item six, which are announcements and presentations to the public. And we'll start with brief comments by the city council, and we'll start with Councilmember Gottberg.
I have none tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Clarici.
I have none tonight.
All right. Vice Mayor.
I don't have any.
All right. Councilman Yarborough.
I have none on either.
Yeah, I do have. I have a couple. And you guys were there, too, but you guys skipped them. You're gonna leave it for me. So we did have a couple of items. First, I just want to thank all the staff and my colleagues as well for our employee appreciation celebration that we always that we've historically done at the pool. And because of COVID and various other reasons, fires, I think, just we didn't get a chance. We haven't had it there in a while. So it was fun to see staff all together again and just to hang out and have a good time. So thank you, everybody. Thanks for everyone that cooked, including your husband, who cooked tri-tip for us. So just thankful for that and having a few hours to get together and to laugh and enjoy ourselves. So that was great. And then we did have our groundbreaking ceremony for our pickleball courts. So I want to thank staff again for all the work, for getting the grant money in place. This is a long time coming. I know Vice Mayor has been working on this for quite a while. So it was nice to see all that come together. We had our supervisor join us as well for that opening, Wendy Thomas. It was a really nice event, and we're looking forward to being able to play pickleball out there. And I'm gonna have to practice. I think some of you have some, a little bit of a head start on me. But and then lastly, we did, Vice Mayor and I got to also attend that same day, actually, the opening of the new bike park in, right off the Eldorado Trail, in, right behind, what'd that be? I guess the. Oh, off Old Depot Road. I mean, it's Missouri Flat. I mean, it's a fantastic facility. They did a really good job. They tightened some of the old rail lines just as a feature for the sort of the entrance to go into it. Really, you know, they were, I think, one of five projects that actually have completed it through, you know, the state grant funding. And we had kids, adults, tons of people lined up and ready to go and try out the course. So Jackie and I were taking bets to see who's gonna be the first one to have the honor of the bandaged arm as they take a hill, maybe a little too hard. But no, it was, it was great. I, you know, the one thing I looked at when I was there was like, wow, those are great bathrooms. I was just trying to think for ourselves, like, you know, they were like kind of prefab, but like cement board, and they looked almost indestructible. So as we, as we move forward, you know, those are, those are great bathrooms for us maybe to have somewhere else as we replace things. So anyways. Did I leave anything else out on any of those?
No.
All right. All right, then. That is it for comments by city council. Any public comments on item 6.1? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. Does any member wish to remove an item or have a conversation on anything here? All right. Seeing none, I want to go ahead and open up the consent calendar for a public comment. All right. Seeing no public comments. We'll go ahead and close public comments on consent and bring it back to the council for action or further.
I will move the consent calendar.
Thank you. We have a first.
A second.
Thank you, David. We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gottberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Clarici.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Aye.
Vice Mayor No.
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa.
Aye. All right. The consent calendar passes out unanimously. Thank you. So moving to item eight, public comments for non-agendized items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda and that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. And we'll go ahead and move to item 8.1, which is oral communication. So if you have a public comment, please feel free to come to the podium.
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville, member of the Fire Safe Council. And I am really thrilled to see the Growlersburg Fire Crew out on Lower Main Street on Monday doing a great job cleaning up along the creek. So, good for us. Good for the city.
Thank you.
Kirk Smith. I just wanted to mention that Saturday, there was an event at the, down the street at the old post office building. And I have nothing to do with it other than I went to an event that they sponsored downtown during wagon train. And it was by far the most fascinating thing. It is about death. They're just, a chance to learn all kinds of things, like what is awake? Where did the word come from? What is the phrase "dead ringer" all about? It was actually fascinating because in the past, we approached death much differently than we have in the recent. I'm just guessing your house has a room that was the parlor because all houses of that time had parlor. You'd have a wake for four days. You could bring in the midwife, so you could be born and die in the same, same building. It was not uncommon to take photographs of people in the casket or to actually prop up people next to family members if you could afford a camera or photographer because we just approached death differently as part of life. And much like why it's exciting that we've got Day of the Dead being done this year. So when you're downtown looking at all those fancy cars and that kind of thing on Saturday, stopping from 10 to 4, it's really fascinating. Good for the whole family. Again, I have nothing to do with it other than I thought it was great. And those two groups that do it buried history and saved the graves, do wonderful things in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk, for the information. Appreciate it. Any other comments? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion. Regina, did we have any written communication? All right. Thank you. All right. So moving along here tonight, we do not have any items pulled from consent, no ordinance, and no public hearings. So we will move to our discussion and action items, which is item 12.1 is our first, which is to consider approval of a road closure and a no on-street parking on Main Street for the Eldorado High School Homecoming Parade on September 14th from 5:45 to 7:00 p.m. And Chief Ren has this item for us this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good evening. This is a detail that we've supported in the past, up until 2020, when things obviously changed for the school district and for the city. They stopped hosting the event. This year, they want to bring it back. Traditionally, we would support the detail by doing rolling road closures where we didn't have to actually man barricades to stop the traffic because the participant, the participants were within a very manageable number. This year, they anticipate being approximately 500 spectators and 200 participants. So after reviewing the safety brief on it, I made the decision that it would be a safer event for all involved if we were to shut that road down for that hour while the kids were walking from the Ivy Lot to really Main Street. You'll start to see them disperse, but we have the closure all the way up to Main and Sacramento. And that's, that's really it. It's a detail we've done before this, this time because of the amount of people in and out of the roadway. We're gonna shut it down.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Any questions or comments from city council? All right. Well, we'll go ahead and open it up for any public comments. All right. Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Wow, this is going fast tonight.
There must be something wrong.
No, and I thought, I mean, when I first saw it, I was like, oh, a road closure. This is, we've had this conversation a bit. But this is, I mean, this is, this is historically always happened. And this is a one-off. This is a great thing. Like you said, go Cougars.
Go Cougars.
So I think this is a great thing for the city. Any other?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yeah, I mean, I would just say, I mean, it's something that we've traditionally done. I think, you know, events like this that are our local high school here in town are things we want to support. And it seems like this is the safest way to do it, and it's a very short duration of time. So it's not a big impact to folks.
No. Yep.
Because it's after the businesses close, so you're not impacting the businesses except for the restaurants. And my understanding is the chief had them go and talk to those businesses and kind of get everybody's sign off and everybody's supportive of it.
It was, you know, it was twofold. I, we requested that the school, the volunteers for this program make contact with the downtown merchants, and they did that to the best of their ability. I also strong-armed them into making sure that families stayed and actually ate at the restaurant after the event was over.
All right.
I thought it only fair that we supported their event. They helped support our city. So really good partner to work with, the school. Just fantastic level of communication and their desire and willingness to help with these events, to make them successful is, is just fantastic.
Chief, will our, will our new Jeep be in the parade?
It will be.
All right. I like it.
It will be. I think it's leading the parade.
I only saw it the other day. I was rolling by the high school.
It looks really cool.
Looks good. Yeah. All right. Any other comments or? I will entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
All right.
I'll second.
All right. We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clarici.
Aye.
Councilmember Gottberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Aye.
Vice Mayor No.
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief, and thank you for strong-arming them, too, to go and support, support some restaurants afterwards as well. So that's, that's awesome. Okay. Moving to item 12.2. This is to consider ratification of a consulting services agreement with Townsend Public Affairs Incorporated to provide grant writing assistance for the CPUC Last Mile Federal Funding Grant. And Mr. Morris has this report for us. And then just want to say for, just for complete transparency, my nephew works at Townsend Public Affairs. I don't, there's no financial arrangement for me or anything, but just wanted to say that I have a nephew that works at this firm. So with that, Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. One of my favorite topics, broadband, that I've been working on the last several years. And we've been anticipating this for some time. But as you know, there's been fairly significant amounts of funding that has now come out from the state. I guess it's federal ARPA funds coming through the state is what the funding is. And so we want to take advantage of this as much as possible. We have some really good people. As you know, my senior management analyst, Steve McCarger, is doing a great job in moving this along, and I'm really impressed with what he's done. But in order to make sure that we, you know, hit all the points and have the best possible chance of getting some funding through this program, we really felt that we should consider a professional grant writing firm for this. So we, we talked to four different firms, and they're listed on page two of the report. Townsend Public Affairs, Lexi Poll, California Communities, and Grant Management Associates. And as we reviewed those, we really felt strongly that Townsend Public Affairs had the best knowledge of this grant and specifically related to broadband and have a good track record and a good program that we felt met our needs. And the cost of $7,500, we thought was reasonable for what we're doing here. And so we did talk to them and wanted to move quickly because this grant deadline is actually September 29th. So that does not give us a lot of time. And therefore, I made the decision to award this contract to them prior to bringing this to you so that we had a little bit more time to get them going and get the grant written. So they hit the ground running. We've already had two meetings with them, I believe, and with our technical consultant, Entry Point, who is working with us on the design. We're excited and really feel that we have a good shot at this, even though there's some technicalities in the, in the grant that are difficult for us, that we are dealing with and trying to figure out the best way to work with that and get the most funding we can. In terms of numbers, the state has $4 billion, $2 billion for rural counties and $2 billion for urban counties. We fall in that rural portion. And then on top of that, they, they put out a kind of a notice that based on the number of unserved properties, different counties would be eligible for a certain amount. And that's not a hard number. You can get more or less than that. But Eldorado County was, is eligible for. The number they came out for Eldorado County is $111 million, which is a big number. And we're included within that. It's not divided by counties and cities. It's a total for the county. But that amount is based on the number of unserved. And where we, I talked about some of the technicalities, where we potentially fall down a little bit is in that unserved category. We have some, but not as many. We have what I would term a lot of underserved, but not unserved. And so we're gonna, we're gonna fight through the language and see what we can do to get the most out of this. And we really feel that both our consultant has been extremely helpful. I want to compliment Steve McCarger, our senior management analyst. The work that he's done has been tremendous in going over. The CPUC, Public Utility Commission, came out with all these maps and tools that you can use. And he's been doing a lot of work on those and really coming up with some things that we can work with. And then our consultant, Entry Point, has been doing the same. And we got some information from them as far as what they think we should apply for. And then because of the fact that we've already done our high-level design work for this, it works well for us to be able to pull out what we want to do in this grant and get a dollar figure for that, that we can apply for. So we're excited to move forward with this. What we're asking for you tonight, since I went ahead and awarded the contract, is asking you to ratify that contract through this resolution that's attached. And I'm available to answer any questions. And if they're too technical, Steve's behind the wall here. I'll grab him and pull him out, too. So.
All right. Thank you, Cleve. Is there any questions at this point? I did have one, Cleve. That was the $101 million. Because Eldorado County actually did really well in terms of how the numbers broke down, that $111 million. So just for clarification purposes, so is that money, are those funds sitting at the CPUC? And then that's the total amount that the county as a whole, us and I guess South Lake, could pull down? Or is that a separate bundle of money that we can hope to work with as well in addition to this grant that we're trying to get here?
No, that, that is the same thing. It's the same, same number. Yep, same pot of money. Yep.
So it's incumbent upon Eldorado County, then, to really try to go out and bring these funds in?
Correct. And us. We're eligible, both us and the county. And I think tribes are also eligible for this funding. So.
That makes sense.
But anyway, that, yeah, it's, it's up to us to plead our case and show that we have the need and then hopefully get awarded. It's really, I will tell you, it's been, it came out really fast, really short timeline, and hasn't been the best in terms of getting information from the CPUC. But they're, they're trying. They've, they've come up with some new things lately, I think, that have been good, and we're trying to work.
Yeah, I think that's exactly what it is. I mean, it's, the PUC is both getting this money out and inventing the process at the same time.
Exactly.
So yes, while you're seeing, I think, some of these stumbling blocks because they had, there was so much money that the state of California was swimming in just two years ago that they were basically putting it everywhere. And this is one of those, those categorical fundings that they came up with. So Cleve, do you know, just for curiosity really, is, is there other, are there other, besides this, are there other opportunities for us to work with the county to try to do, like, I don't know, like middle mile-wise? I mean, it'd be great if we could use this money to try to go further beyond the middle mile or if there were other things. But I just didn't know how far along the county is in their process with this.
So because of the tight timeframe, the county originally was looking at what I would call more of a public-private partnership where they potentially were more involved. Because of the tight timeframe and such a large project with that amount of money, it's my understanding that they are now working strictly with private providers and talking to how they can provide the service and the county would give them money to be able to install that service. So totally different scenario or product than we are looking at. But we have had good conversations with them. One of the big questions that we have gotten as we've done this through our surveys is we get a lot of questions from people who are just outside our city limits. And initially, our comment has been, we can only serve our city limits. However, there could be an agreement in the future that would allow us to serve outside our city limits if the county agreed to that. So.
At least our sphere of influence.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
That would make sense.
Yeah.
Well, especially if we, if what's envisioned becomes reality, there's gonna be a lot of people collaborating for that level of, you know, high-speed connectivity.
Yeah. And I did, just so you know, I talked to our technical people, Entry Point, on that issue and said, will we have the capacity to do that in the future if we need to? And they said, absolutely. It's easily, easily done that you can expand that service to reach out farther. So.
Scalable. Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? All right. We'll go ahead and open up item 12.2 for a public comment. All right. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the council for either further conversation or to move the item.
I'll move the item.
All right. Thank you.
I'll second.
All right. We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clarici.
Aye.
Councilmember Gottberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Aye.
Vice Mayor No.
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, Cleve, go, go win us those, those funds.
We'll do our best.
All right. No, I do think we're in a really good position. And thank you, Cleve, for that because it's, I think we're ahead of a lot of other municipalities out there in terms of just having a product that's not necessarily shovel-ready, but certainly at a high level, much more so than other areas. So I think we're in good position to do well.
Some people have commented, they're amazing. Even though it's high-level design, the amount of detail that is in there that allows us to pretty much show. I mean, you, you could argue that you just, you know, bring this down and this is it. So it's that amount of detail that we can move forward with. So.
Great. All right. Thank you, Cleve. Okay. So we're gonna go ahead and move to item 12.3. And that is to consider approval of the final maps for Phase Four and Phase Six of the Cottonwood Park subdivision and accept the easements and dedications offered on said map. And Mr. Rivas has this report for us.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The review of the final map is a ministerial process and is statutorily exempt from environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. So as a ministerial, ministerial action, there is no opportunity for the city to modify the map or change or add any new conditions. Staff is requesting that the council concur with staff's review and find that the applicant has substantially complied with the conditions of approval for the Cottonwood Park Phases Four and Six tentative map and allow for the recording of the final map, which would create 39 single-family residential lots, which can then be developed and individually sold. To give a little project description, the tentative subdivision map was approved by the city council on October 26th of 2010 to allow the merge and re-subdivide of three parcels, totaling approximately 6.2 acres into two phases. Phase Four, which would contain 19 single-family residential parcels, and Phase Six, which would contain 20 single-family residential parcels. The final map for Phases Four and Six will facilitate the recording of the map and the creation of 39 single-family residential lots for development. The project is generally located north, at the north end of Constellation Avenue, approximately 100 feet north from its intersection with Clay Street, adjacent and south of Rodon Court and Poverty Hill Drive. This action will also include the acceptance and recordation of irrevocable offers of dedication to the city that will ultimately contribute to the final alignment and configuration of Constellation Avenue and the creation of Utah Drive and supporting slope easements. To give some background with regards to the Cottonwood Park plan development, back in 1988, the city council approved a request for a general plan amendment and zone chains for a 214-unit-phase plan development, known as the Cottonwood Park Plan Development, consisting of 66 single-family lots, 78 townhouses, and 70 apartment units on approximately 49 acres, generally located between Pleasant Street, Anderson Way, Rodon Court, and bisected by Clay Street. In 1992, the city council approved tentative subdivision map for Phase One, which consisted of 35 single-family lots on approximately seven acres on the southeast portion of the development plan. In 1998, Phase Two of the development plan was approved, which basically substituted 78 affordable apartment units, known as the Cottonwood Park Apartments, instead of the original 78 market-rate townhomes that were proposed. In 1998, also, approval was granted for Phase Three and Phase Five of the planned development, which consisted of nine single-family lots and a 81 affordable senior apartment complex, known as the Cottonwood Senior Apartments. The completion of all phases of the Cottonwood Park planning development, except Phases Four and Six, which is before you this evening, comprising the 39 lots, have been fully constructed and are fully occupied. The completion of Cottonwood Park Phases Four and Six will finally complete the Cottonwood Park Development Plan, being first approved back in 1988. The Cottonwood Park Phases Four and Six was approved by the city council on October 26th of 2010. A time extension request, which was extension number five, was approved by the city on April 25th of 2022, which extended the expiration or life of the tentative map to April 26th of 2024. Staff has reviewed the conditions of approval for the tentative subdivision map as approved back in April 25th of 2022 and is originally approved by city council. A verification of conditions of approval is attached, is attachment C to your staff report. The review of the conditions of approval is a ministerial action. If the final map is found in substantial compliance with the conditions of approval, the city must allow for the recording of the final map. Staff has conducted a very thorough review of the conditions of approval and recommends that the council approve the attached resolution, which is attachment A of your staff report, which will approve the final map for Cottonwood Phase Four and Six. In addition, the final map has been reviewed by the Eldorado County Surveyors' Office, and the map has been deemed to be technically correct and suitable for recording. Lastly, the construction of the 39 single-family homes will assist the city in meeting its regional housing needs allocation regional housing needs allocation for the planning period of 2021 through 2029 planning cycle. We're looking at these homes will be basically satisfying the moderate to above moderate. So these homes are probably going to sell from about 600, mid-600 to high $600,000 range for the more production homes. And then there's some construction of some custom homes that we built in the larger lots on the north end. And just in case you were wondering, our arena numbers are, we're to construct 56 very-low income homes for that planning period, 34 low, 50 moderate, and 119 above moderate. So we'll be chipping away at that above moderate in this case. Staff did provide two additional handouts. I think they were passed out earlier by the city clerks. I want to go over those real quickly. What, what, the first document provided to you is basically just a revised final map. So there's no substantive changes that were made. What was done was we added Phases Four and Six instead of what's in your packet just says Cottonwood Park Phases Four. No other changes were, have been made to the final map. The second handout is a notice of restriction that would be recorded concurrently with the recording of the final map to ensure that no individual lots are to be sold prior to the formation of the Community Facilities District. So the city has contracted with the consultant to prepare a community facilities district that would pay for things like street maintenance, storm drain maintenance, maintenance of Duffy Park, and asset replacement. So the city has retained the consulting services of NBS to assist with the creation of the Community Facilities District, and that will probably occur after recording the map. So the property as a whole can be sold from the current developer to the home builder without fanfare, but at least it'll stop any sale of individual lots until the CFD is created. So with that, staff is recommending that the council adopt the resolution approving the final map for Phases Four and Six of the Cottonwood Park subdivision, consisting of 39 single-family residential lots, finding that the subdivision development is in substantial compliance with the approved conditions of approval and tentative subdivision map, which is TSM05-01-E5, as demonstrated in the attached verification conditions of approval. Staff would just add that it's been a long time coming. I don't think the city's approved the final map, and I think the last one may have been 2009, so it's been a while. It's great to see the Cottonwood Park plan development be completed. If those of you that may have driven up there, it is open. I, in fact, drove through yesterday just to have another look. It's, they really did a fine job on all the improvements. It's ready to be fully developed, and it'd be nice to see houses on these lots. So with that, staff is ready to answer any questions you may have. I believe we also have a representative from REY here also that can answer any questions you may have from a technical point of view on the surveying and anything else. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you, Pierre. Thank you. All right, any questions?
Can I make one?
Oh, yeah, go for it, Cleve.
Maybe Rebecca, if you. Also want to note, Matt Verkamp is here tonight. They're the owners of the property currently, if you have any questions of them also. And along the lines of the CFD, your next meeting, we plan to bring you the notice of intent to create that. So just so you know, that's not a long way out in getting the CFD completed. So that is coming soon, so.
I have a question about that.
Okay.
I'm assuming there'll be an assessment, a parcel assessment, okay? And will it be indexed? Okay, good, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, all right.
I think that's, that's the problem we run into on all the older ones, is that they're still paying 1988 prices versus 2023, so, okay, great question. Any other questions or comments?
I have some, I have comments.
Yep.
Why not? For anybody, and at this podium, and when I was on the Planning Commission at the county, at that podium and other podiums around here, frequently you will hear some people say how we are forcing, we are forcing these things down people's throat and how we're rushing to go do this. And I would like to turn you all, your attention to the dates in the staff report that started in 1988. And I will leave you, and I actually lived in town in 1988, and this was a very controversial thing. And many of the arguments against it were the same ones you hear today. It will mess up traffic, it'll screw up our schools, it'll change my way of life, not me specifically, but whoever was standing there, their way of life, and it will, it will damage the community. And now, fast forward 34, if my math, 35 years, if my math is correct? And Cottonwood is a lovely community, it's an essential part of our town. Those apartments that were really targeted, this fill a absolutely necessary niche for folks in this community. And I will just remind people when they come to that podium again of Cottonwood. Cottonwood has turned out to be a very lovely place to live. And, and I went through where the improvements were made, and they are fantastic, thank you very much. And I think that, and I've seen some of the, the drawings for the houses, the renderings, I think they're, they're going to look a little different, but I think they're going to look really cool. And if Placerville is anything, it is eclectic. So I think this is, as Mr. Rivas said, a long time coming and much needed and very much welcomed, and I just only hope that the climate will allow us to actually see homes built on those parcels fairly, fairly soon. So anyway, those are my comments.
Thank you, council member. Kind of similar comments. I mean, I almost see that this, this little development is almost like a unicorn in a way, because you just don't see single-family homes built on the type of lots that these are even going to have anymore, just because of the price points and a lot of reasons. You're going to see more attached housing and just really small lot lines, you know, going forward. So these are, you will not see a lot of this in the future. So for anyone looking for homes, this is, this is going to be a little bit different. And just for some context on top of what John said as well, is, you know, if you saw an article about, that's probably a little less than two weeks ago, Department of Finance forecasting for County of Eldorado is saying through 2060, a 16% drop in population in our county. That's significant. They're also saying the same thing for like Los Angeles and San Francisco County, but all of our sister counties, Sacramento, Placer, Yolo, all seeing significant growth. So that might be a, you know, some people might be happy about that, but when you talk about jobs and where kids are going to work and do things, a 16% decrease in population is not a good thing for a county. So just something to think about when folks are looking at housing as well, is that we really aren't outbuilding ourselves or building so much when you're having that type of forecasting. Now, I will say, the caveat on top of that is if you talk to HCD, Housing and Community Development, and you talk to CARB, California Air Resources Board, they're going to give you different numbers than what Department of Finance came out with. So a little bit of, you know, who's on first, you know, within the executive branch, but nonetheless, to have, and Department of Finance is really good about this, but to have them come out and say that is a significant thing for our county and something that, on a global aspect, we need to, you know, think deep about as well. So just to add to your comments. And so with that, any, any other comments on this, on this item or question?
Mayor of staff can make just one anecdotal comment. I just want to state that staff has received a number of inquiries about when, when this property is going to be available. I've got a lot of friends that are very much retired and are looking at scaling down, and they would like to move in there. So we've been feeling those questions off to the, to Williams Homes, the home builder, and it's, it's just nice from staff's perspective to see this demand for, for a new subdivision.
Great, thank you. All right, well, so with that then, I will go ahead and open up for public comment. Mr. Verkamp, if you want to give any thoughts or any, make any, any statements, up to you. And we'll go ahead and open up for public comment.
I just, I think.
Come to the podium. We can hear you, but just for the people on, on YouTube.
I don't like to be in front and center. I just thank you for considering the project, and like you said, the timeline has been since 1988. It's nice to see this thing come to a close. We've worked closely with the city to make a really nice product. Thank you very much for your thoughts, insights, and engineering. They are planning on building specs this fall and winter, and they will be ready in the spring for sale, so.
Cool.
That's all of it. Thank you.
Great, thank you for the update. And we'll go ahead and continue with public comments.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident. I'm really glad to see this go forward. Placerville has had a lot of people who would like to live here because they work here. Our population almost doubles during the day from people who come from wherever here to work, and a lot of those people would really like to live here. And so I think it's wonderful that we realize that a city that doesn't grow eventually dies. So we're much better off to have an influx of houses and people, and we're very lucky that we do have a lot of people who work here and would like to move here. So this is great.
Thank you for your comments. All right, any further public comments? See none. We'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for further discussion or motion.
Pickleball courts and houses, that's why it's better to live in the city than not. I would like to move this item.
Thank you.
I'll second, and I'll just add, I think this is a very important project. We need housing of all types in our city, and, you know, this has been a project 35 years in the making, so it's great that we will actually have houses fairly soon that people can buy and live.
Thank you, and well said. We have a first and a second. We'll do, any other comments? We'll do a roll call then.
Councilmember Clarici.
Aye.
Councilmember Gottberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Aye.
Vice Mayor No.
Aye.
Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody. Looking forward to seeing those first sticks in the ground on these, so thank you. All right, moving along to item 13, which are council reports from other agencies, and we will start with the Eldorado County Transit Authority.
All right, so we received and filed our final amended operating budget for 2223. We awarded a contract for new transit software, and we appointed Brian James, our executive director.
Awesome.
Yes.
Very good. All right, Eldorado County Transportation Commission.
I actually brought the agenda with me, and, because it's the only way. We actually did some very inside-baseball things. They, Woody Woodrow Deloria, the executive director, has his eye on rightsizing and sort of fine-tuning the tasks for individual job descriptions. And so he's moved some items from one to the other to kind of balance them out. He's also sort of looking for the future. He, as he says repeatedly, no one is thinking of retiring yet, but he's kind of planning for that, so he's actually doing a little really smart planning. So we took care of that and approved those changes. There was a state transportation block grant. They wanted to reprogram some Transportation Development Act money, which they did. It was to a bicycle project, I forget the exact number, but they did it. Anyway, it's, it's okay. And then they did the thing that I always very much look forward to, and it's this. This is the, they do this twice a year, and they basically kind of read, they don't read it to you every word, but they go through it. This is called the Project Monitoring Report, and this is basically, it's everything that's transportation being done in the county, not just the item. Most of the things are things that the Transportation Commission funds or plans for, stuff like that. But some, some of it isn't. Some of it is just stuff that is exclusively city and exclusively county. And it's a great document, and everyone, you can go online and look at it, or imagine if you asked them, they, well, they might not make you a copy, but, but you can look at it. And if you want to find out what's going on, this is it. And they do it twice a year. It's an excellent document, and they made the report on that, and there's lots going on, so. The really exciting thing is actually, I'll, I will, well, there's two things that are exciting. One is they are, they're going to do a safety, some safety work at that location up in Pollock Pines with those, we had that very unfortunate accident with those schoolchildren. And that is obviously very critical, and I think that's where, that's where they were moving the block grant money around for, and some other, I won't get you, it's a lot of detail-y money talk. But they are doing that. The other thing that's really exciting, I think, is they are starting to do the spade work, not literally spade work, planning work and engineering work for a potential overcrossing for the Eldorado Trail at Missouri Flat Road, which will be much like the one I was involved with many moons ago on, yeah, I'm actually pointing in the right direction this time, on Highway 50 at Smith Flat. That used to be an at-grade railroad crossing, and we secured funding back in the 90s to build that overcrossing. They are doing the same thing now at Missouri Flat Road, which will obviously increase the safety first and foremost, but also the utility of that, of that, of that trail, which is just a jewel for the county and attracts a lot of people, not just locally, but from outside the county as well. So those are two things. And then one sort of funny thing that I thought was amusing, I didn't say anything at the time, because I just, you know, I wanted to go home. They're also putting some money into, looking into sidewalks down in Cameron Park, I believe, on Cambridge, and doing some, and what's so funny about that was when Cameron Park was actually planned and all everything was laid out, they specifically said, we don't want there to be sidewalks because it would make it more country, and what you end up with is people walking on streets. And the way it's all laid out, there's, there's really no way to go anywhere unless you go out onto the street. It was a, anyway, so now we're paying for sidewalks that should have been built 50 years ago. Okay, that's it.
Yeah, and just one other little tidbit from all that, and you're, and you're right, is that, so like the project up in Pollock Pines, a much-needed project, much more expensive than had been originally anticipated, and I think, and Rebecca knows this well, I think all of our staff does, everything is costing more today than it was inflation and everything else that's going on. So even when you have these funds out there, you're still being able, unfortunately, you're doing less because, or you're having to move or push.
Right.
Projects out because you're having to use more funding. So just something for the public to be aware of is, you might not see some projects move as quickly because everything is very, very expensive for road projects.
There was a, that project was somewhat unique. I mean, it's true, there's lots, lots of projects are coming in. Although, I believe there were two projects that they had recently opened bids on that had, or we did, or maybe it was some, that had actually been at bid and under, at, at the target and under the target. I think the county did, that's what they said. Anyway, not the point. The point is, actually, it is the point, but also the point is, in my part of Paradise, Lassen County, we've had two bids come in at the bid target. So there's maybe some indication that things might be kind of leveling out a little bit. This project was interesting because it had a lot of little pieces that were part of a big project, and sometimes those are the worst to get bids on because they involve a bunch of different things, and that can sometimes drive the price up. Whereas if you're just doing a paving project, everybody that's out there doing those projects can do them, they know how to bid them, they know what to, you know, and those tend to come in at least usually pretty good. So anyway, it was just an interesting thing.
Thank you, John. And you're up again for LAFCO.
We did not meet, we will meet when I'm not here, like two weeks from now.
Yeah, I will be there.
All right, thank you. SAKOG, same thing, we meet next Thursday in Sacramento. Pioneer.
We did not meet, and we will be meeting when I am gone and John is gone, so unfortunately, Placerville will not be represented.
At the next one.
In Pioneer Energy Community this coming month, but we should be fine.
Gotcha, nothing, nothing urgent on the.
No, nothing urgent coming up.
All right, cool. Placerville Fire Safety Council.
I did not attend that meeting because I went to the employee party. I will defer to Sue Rodman if there are any important developments in that meeting, but I do want to mention that there was a resident who was dealing with their insurance and reported that they lived in a firewise community and received a $200 discount off their insurance.
Which is not bad, considering how expensive insurance is. So, no, that's a great development, and everybody should, should be looking at that if, if you're living in, we have two parts of Placerville, right? So it's three, three towns, three parts?
Well, we have Placerville North East is approved, Placerville South, everything south of 50 is approved. We do not have Placerville Northwest approved yet for firewise communities.
Gotcha. Coming soon. Hopefully. All right, Opportunity Knox, continuing move care.
Yeah, we met, we made some approvals of our fiscal subcommittee's budget recommendations, some prioritization with putting continuing projects at the top for HUD funding applications. And then we did receive an update on the permanent navigation center, so that is moving forward with construction in the near future, and they are targeting having it built and operational right now by the end of March 2025. So we'll see if that stays on track, but it is moving forward, and they are, they have like design plans and things like that.
Great, all right, thank you. Great, all right, thank you. Okay, I will, any, any other comments on that one? No. All right, I will go ahead and open up item 13 for any public comment.
Sue Rodman, member of the Fire Safe Council, and since Jackie has graciously asked me to come fill her in, the last meeting we had, we discussed making our request for the funds that have been allocated from the city and from the cannabis committee, and also to make sure that everybody knows that if you're in the South Placerville, you are in a firesafe community, and to, and the Northeast and Northwest, that they are working on it, so it won't be too long. And for people who have done work on their property for home hardening or for defensible space, please turn in your hours worked count and money spent counts towards making our community the fire safe, fire, fire safe communities. So, and then they will give you a certificate for your property, but then you can take that to your insurance company and fight with them over what you should pay. So that's, that's pretty much was the most of it.
Sue, can you just give us the contact information where people can report the hours and money spent on home hardening?
Oh, boy. Placerville Fire Safe Council has a website. So if you look for placervillefiresafe council.org, and you can turn things in there.
Thank you.
Thank you for the information. Any other comments on item 13? All right, seeing none. We will then go and move to item 14, which are requests for future agenda items. Does any council member have a request? Nope. All right, seeing none. We will move to, Cleve, you have anything? Nope, okay. We'll move on to item 15, staff reports, and item 15.1, which is our August 2023 police report, and Chief Friend, anything you want to highlight?
Thank you, Mayor. Last month, our officers responded to 2,109 calls for service. It's about 34 calls per 12-hour shift for officers. They affected 69 arrests, 36 felonies, and 33 misdemeanors, and response times phenomenal, at an average of 3 minutes and 45 seconds. The only thing that spiked towards, spiked for us towards the end of the month was our larcenies, and that's in a specific area. So we've deployed CRT and plainclothes guys in that area to, they're breaking into cars, so we've got a solution for that. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions that come up.
All right, thank you, Chief. Councilmember?
I don't have any questions, but I should have mentioned this earlier in the agenda. I actually participated in a review panel for Sergeant this week, last week. And I just want to say that we had three candidates, all internal, and it was fantastic. All three candidates were extraordinary, and any one of them can, would do a great job. And I think it's just a testimony to the way that the department's being run, thank you very much, and, and the kind of people we get to do law enforcement here in town, and we should all be very thankful for that. But it was a, an incredible experience, and one I would be happy to repeat, so thank you.
Thank you for participating. Your input was very valuable, very valuable.
Any other questions? Chief, I just had one, and you may not know this off the top of your head, but I just, I noticed there was a spike in DUIs for the month of August. Was that because of our, we had the checkpoint?
It was, yeah, we actually caught, we never catch people going drunk. That's like a known thing, but we did, a couple, a couple arrests were made as a result of that. But also our saturation patrols, again, the grant affords us the opportunity to pay overtime details, to put more cops out on the street during those hours, which we identify as, as being the most likely for us to catch somebody who's drinking and driving, and yeah, that spiked up for us. I did also get an answer regarding the traffic collisions that we talked about with Highway 50. If we, if we were to remove Highway 50 from our numbers, we would be an extremely safe city as far as traffic collisions are occurred, so.
That makes sense, especially with the uniqueness of the miles per, I mean, the whole thing, so yeah, that makes, that makes a lot of sense. Chief, I was just gonna ask you, how is, how have the new ATVs been working out, and have you seen any, I mean, have we seen anything different on the, on the trails with our new quads and patrols out there?
I took the city manager up on one. We actually contacted a couple transients that had set up an encampment, and they ended up moving. So we're just pounding that, that section of the, of the trail. We haven't stretched our legs to head up towards the Forney area yet, but that's on the radar. Right now, we're kind of juggling some staffing stuff, but you'll see the officers up there on those vehicles more frequently, especially in the winter time, because it's just, it's easier for them to get up in there. We bought roofs for the UTVs, so it's a little bit more comfortable ride for them.
Cool. All right, thank you. I will go ahead and open up item 15.1 for any public comment. Seeing none. All right, thank you, Chief. All right, and we'll move to item 15.2, Chief Cordero, anything you'd like to highlight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The crews have been busy. You'll see the stats for Engine MEC 25, both of them, about 300 calls for last month. Last week, we did host joint training with CHP for our helicopter rescue technicians out in Cronin Ranch. It was a great training for our folks to attend. As we continue to work through the annexation process with Diamond Springs, we actually got our first draft of the feasibility study last week, which was, as we expected, very positive, and it looks like that's gonna continue to move forward. And then we did, with our joint operations with Diamond Springs, we recently reconfigured some of our command team and have implemented a dual battalion system. So we have a chief officer on duty at Station 48 on Missouri Flat, 24/7. That station's just north of 50, and then our Station 21 in Camino also has a second chief that's on duty 24/7. It's a great enhancement for our crews, it's, it's a big safety enhancement for them, and then it decreases response time and span of control and things like that, so moving forward there, and it's very positive, and happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions, comments? Just had one quick question, maybe it's quick. What's the, what do you foresee the timeline on the annexation? Like, how long of a process is that to go from where we're at today to full annexation?
I was hoping it'd be done by now, but, so we, we are targeting having the final feasibility study and all the resolutions ready to present to LAFCO, hopefully approve our boards in November with a, with a supplemental from there. And then hopefully by next May, June, we should be able to see the finish line if we're not there.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open up 15.2 for any public comments. All right, seeing none. Again, thank you, Chief Cordero. And item 15.3, our Development Services Department, God, I just butchered that today. Development Services Department's permitting statistics and development statistics for August. And Mr. Revaz?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing really to add, other than I just want to highlight that we did see a little spike in revenues, and I think that had to do with some of the large, larger ticketed items. We had a very high valuation of some of the projects. Projects like Harbor Freights, we had a duplex, we had single-family home, some of the higher value developments sort of spiked our revenues, both impact fees and permit fees, so we're happy to see that.
Good news. All right, I did have one, one question, Pierre, and this is something that Vice Mayor and I both saw, and it was really some online chatter in regards to us sort of finally having a full-time enforcement officer and, you know, them going about enforcing laws that we've had in the books for many years, but just, you know, for a variety of reasons, whether it was COVID or just not having the resources that we weren't really enforcing. I didn't know if you could just kind of give a, a sense to the public of how we're going about, like, educating businesses and others, you know, for, for violations, because I know, I think we're moving beyond just having people on, from a calling in to, to, yeah, complaint-driven to actually being proactive, so I didn't know if you could just give a brief sort of, you know, how that's coming about, just because there was some concerns out there. I made some comments, and I think some of that was having it worked out anyways, but I think there was some folks wondering, well, how come that place still has a banner up, and I had to take mine down, things like that.
Sure, let's go back to 2008, 2009. That was the start of the Great Recession. I was in a staff capacity, I was in a different capacity then, but I do recall that staff had mentioned to the council at that time that they were gonna sort of hold back on enforcement of certain codes such as signage, because businesses were struggling during that time. And when, you know, we finally pulled out of the, pulled out of the Great Recession, we were doing well. But at that time, we only had part-time staff doing code enforcement. In fact, the part-time person that we had was only half of that, only probably a quarter doing code enforcement. That person was doing a lot of other duties as well. So we finally got a part-time code enforcement that was dedicated to do code enforcement. Then the pandemic hit, and of course, small businesses were really being hit hard as opposed to big business. So, I threw that in. But anyways, so again, we were a little lax on signage, and you probably recall, we had the free permits that we issued for the temporary use permits for outdoor dining and different things, just trying to do whatever we could to help small business, even if a lot of signage didn't help the bottom line or persuade customers to go in their establishment. I think it gave a comfort zone for, for, for the business owner, that the city was behind them, trying to do what they could to make them, make things happen. We have a new code enforcement person. She is a real go-getter. She's fantastic, very, very smart. She has a lot of law enforcement training. And so I think now we're, we're really going after, you know, the banners and the signs like that. We do run into that, we do run into that discussion quite a bit with the business. They point fingers at, well, how come that business has a banner, or that business over there is doing this, or A, B, and C. So we try and educate them that, that we're not trying to single anybody out. We do prioritize where there's an actual complaint. We do receive quite a few complaints on signage, believe it or not. A lot of those from people that formerly sat in your chairs complained about certain things like that. They're really concerned about the look and feel of Placerville, and they don't want it to, you know, look sort of cluttered with a lot of signage, so, so we're paying a lot of attention to signage. As you can see, we're, we're actually going to come before you to declare to abandon pole signs as a nuisance. We've been meaning to do that for quite some time, but didn't have time to get actually to it, so we're doing that. But I think a lot of it is education. We really try and soft pedal with the business owners. Typically, we would start with a courtesy notice, just a friendly notice that, you know, your signage or something else is at a violation. I'll just mention, we're getting a lot of issues with outdoor lighting as well. For whatever reason, one business puts out outdoor lighting, everybody follows suit, and so we're trying to hit that quickly and bring, you know, basically that outdoor lighting requires planning commission approval. It's not something that individual property owner can just put lighting on their, the outside of their building, or it's not, it's not something that staff's approval. So we do try and educate, we try and, you know, we have a slow approach, courtesy notice, and then, and then the next step is a notice to correct. And it isn't until after the notice to correct, if we're not getting a response or do a good faith effort on the part of the property owner to come into compliance, then we start levying the fines, and we get a little more heavy-handed. That's typically how, how we've been handling it. Happy to answer any questions you have further on, on that topic.
Great, thank you, Pierre. I really appreciate that. I think it's, it's helpful for folks to know, just kind of the process, and I, without giving any name, I mean, the one that I had heard of too is, you guys were great with them, because they did get notices, but then, you know, they had their permanent sign-on order, and you were, you know, you said, all right, that's great, you have your permanent sign-on order, you know, continue to use your, your banner until that permanent one gets put in. So that's why I try to tell folks as well, which is, just because you've seen something doesn't necessarily mean there hasn't been a conversation or that we're not still, you know, getting to that location. And I've also encouraged folks, if this becomes a big issue, I mean, come talk to us. Like, there's five of us here, there's staff, you know, if you have concerns, or you think times have changed, or there should be a different way of looking at some of these things, you know, come, come talk to us and give us, you know, your, you know, what you're thinking. So I haven't got, taken up on that yet, but I certainly, you know, we'll, we'll talk to anyone if they have concerns on, on these issues, so.
No, thank you very much, Mayor. I really appreciated that, that comment. And we do try and work with the property owner, whatever the issue is, if there's some extenuating circumstances where we can help them, as long as we see a good faith effort to come into compliance, because I think that's what, you know, basically the city's looking at, is everybody just coming into compliance. And so in the case of that sign, right, we typically allow temporary signs either for 30 days after opening, or if, or if the banner is in conjunction with, say, a temporary use permit for an event or something of that nature, then we can permit the banners. But banners, other than those circumstances, are not allowed. But if somebody has, and, and they say, hey, we're working with a sign company, they're, they're backed up on orders, we'll certainly work with them and let them, as long as we know, yeah, they've ordered the sign, and they can keep their banner until they get their permanent sign. But thanks for highlighting that.
Oh, thank you. And that's certainly a reasonable way to, I think, go about code enforcement, so I appreciate, appreciate those comments. Any other comments from council members? All right, I'll go ahead and open up for public comment on item 15.3.
Sue Rodman, Lassenville Fire Safe Council, concern that we have residents and homes that have not got defensible space, that are really in bad shape and need to be cleaned up. Will our enforcement officer be able to go and talk to those people too? I mean, we do have a, an ordinance for us to manage our vegetation in the city, and so I'm wondering, can we do something about people who are not managing their vegetation and the place is a mess and is a fire hazard?
We'll answer that. Thank you. And I know, I, I know I've talked to Pierre on a couple of items myself, on, on lots that, you know, were overgrown, but Pierre, if you have any, any comments on, on vegetation?
Sure, I will add that we're a little more aggressive with fire hazards because of the, you know, the heightened concern that we have. For the most part, I think 99.9% of the city is in a very high fire hazard severity zone, so we take the fire hazards very seriously. So for, for the most part, we certainly encourage people to let us know or complain about a neighbor or particular property that they, that they can see as a fire hazard, and we'll certainly do it, you know, conduct an inspection and, and deal with the property owner accordingly. We do a lot of education, because depending upon whether it's a developed property versus an undeveloped property, whether it's a large piece of property, there are probably more requirements, such as doing a perimeter. There's, there's all kinds of requirements, so we certainly are happy to meet with the property owners than we do. Staff also, when we're out and about, if we see a fire hazard, we will then take note of that property and then start, you know, usually with like a courtesy notice or a notice to correct, depending upon the nature of the fire hazard, but we are proactive. So if we see, if we clearly see a fire hazard, we will take action and not wait for the neighbor to make a complaint.
Thank you, Pierre.
Does the fire marshal have some role in this as well, or no?
We work very closely with Eldorado County Fire Staff, and so there are times, depending upon those properties, where we're looking at more than just maybe pulling vegetation away from the house, or away from the chimney, or mowing a grass, that it's all dead kind of thing. But some of these larger properties- But some of these larger properties that are vacant, we like to utilize the expertise of the fire marshal to come out with us. And so that depending upon, you know, the, the slope of the property and the access of the property, you know, maybe we're looking at something greater than a 30-foot fire break around the perimeter of the property, maybe 100 feet if it's a very steep slope, and there are houses right above on the ridge. So we do work with them to help us with basically applying the right type of defensible space we want to see on a particular piece of property.
Thank you. Kurt, go ahead.
My question, I was gonna ask Sue Rodman to repeat some of that material afterwards, but might as well do it now, because I spend about $2,000 to $5,000 every year for clean vegetation for fire control persons. Had CAL FIRE out several times to give advice, et cetera. So what's this business about, you turn in some information related to how much you've spent to the Fire Safe Council? Has something to do with insurance? Is there some kind of savings involved? If that's true, it'd be helpful to have that widespread information out there.
Yeah, they're working on getting, I'm not sure if it's on the website yet, but they're working on getting it so you can just report those amounts. And what happens is each community, we're trying to get a firewise community. So Placerville South is a firewise community right now, and Placerville Northeast is a firewise community. So if you get your fire insurance bill, you can submit and say, hey, I'm part of a firewise community, and see if your insurance will give you a reduced rate. At one occurrence, somebody who was in the northeast, you know, contacted me and said, hey, what's, what's about this firewise? I sent them the website information so that their insurance company could check that information. And I, and they informed me that they did that, and they received a $200 discount on their insurance.
Yeah, and I know Fair Plan is one of those plan, I think most of the major insurers, but Fair Plan also will give a discount on, if you're in a firewise community. Cleve?
If I could, I think Councilmember Noe also was talking about submitting hours for that. Can you respond to that?
Yeah, so part, part of how we maintain that firewise community is the amount of hours we put into reducing the fire hazards and the money spent. So if all the property owners who are doing those things to improve their property report it to the firewise community, they're able to report that. Because I think it's every two or three years, we have to renew that firewise and get updated. And how you get updated is the, the amount of effort we're putting into becoming firewise communities.
So it's all those things aggregated, essentially? Gotcha, okay, that makes sense. Good question, thank you. All right, any other comments on 15.3? All right, seeing none, thank you. Thank you, Pierre, I appreciate that. So item 16, our upcoming items, again, I'll let people read that on their own. So at 6:15, we will adjourn this evening's meeting. Thank you all very much for attending. Thank you.